Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Department of City of Ripley Commissioners Call Meeting on December 13, 2023. We have an agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Commissioner Tinsley, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCourt. All in favor, please stick your hand up. Five zero. First item under regular agendas, consider executive session pursuant to OCGA Section 5043b2 for purposes of discussing or deliberately upon the appointment, amendment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation of any public officer or employee in pursuit of OCGA Section 5042,1 for purposes of consulting the legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement claims, administration procedures, and other judicial actions, or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee, in which the agency or any officer or employee may be deemed regularly involved. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Mr. McCourt with the motion. Second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please join us.
Thank you.
Okay, we're about to open up the meeting. We have a motion to go up. Mr. Warren, you can move back here for executive session. Executive session second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to two. Had to close the audience. We're still in our work, our call meeting. I applaud. Item two is discuss the current status known during loss negotiations. Statement of your judgment, Connor will address.
Right. So, thank you all for your time. A little while ago in the second session. What I would like to do is briefly go over the memo that was provided attached to the agenda on Friday. Hopefully it gave you a very good overview of where we are. Of course, we went through what the law statute actually means, the history, the negotiations between the city and the county. And this actually started in 1983, being reversed in 1983 after the voters approved it in 1982. So, it's been ongoing for a while. In 2002, the split between the city and the county was 60-40, with the county at 60%. In 2012, that percentage changed by half a percent where the county gave us half a percent of loss, so we were at 40 and a half. And then this year, we are back to figure out where we need to be now. In 2017, if you'll remember, there was an SDS update that was done at that time where we also were asked to negotiate loss at 2022 instead of the 2017. So, we do feel like we're at the appropriate times to make the change. However, what we also realize is that in the best interest of this community, there has been growth within the county, both by population, by the services that they are providing, but the majority of where we are getting that sales tax comes from the city of Griffin, technically right here in the central business district. The amount of services that we have provided even to unincorporated residents, including some of the things that we feel as our city residents, residents are being double taxed for, needs to be addressed, and it was not addressed in our service delivery agreement, up to about seven points, about almost a million dollars worth of double taxation. So, the county was willing to take city park in those negotiations, but we believe that an equitable share is still remain at 40 and a half in order to account for our double taxation, the growth in both areas, as well as them taking city park. So, I'd ask that you consider that, and I think the next item is actually that consideration.
Thank you. More going into consideration. Would any commissioners like to make any comments at this time? Are there any questions?
And there I should also say, I'm sorry, the last offer that we did receive last week, the county met last Monday night, an executive session, and on Tuesday afternoon, I received through sort of an inner office memo, a certificate of distribution from the county that they had put the city of Griffin at 31.7% of loss with Spalding County at 68.3%. So, that is the last offer that we did receive from the county.
Okay. Anybody want to make any comments at this point or already moved into agenda three? Thank you, Mr. Connor. Moving on to three is consider authorizing city management present the offer being the certified certificate of distribution for lost allocation to the county. And I'll make a couple of comments. You know, I've watched this process over the last three decades, and year after year, the city of Griffin has always had to bend over. We really are good at this community, and I think for us to step back and reflect into where I think we're going to end up giving you offer is fair, it's balanced, and it reflects on what the city has done to invest this community. Be the hub of the economic development, look at economic development, whether it's the development authority projects, it's because the city of Griffin has provided a higher level of services, whether it's the water system, the sewer system, our impact in terms of the stormwater utility, what we do with that. Just the other day, I was driving to Pike County and the city of Griffin Fire Department is the first responder on a accident that happened on Zebulon Road outside of the city limit. So, over and over, the city of Griffin makes a dozen more than our fair share to make this a great place to live, learn, work, play, and hopefully one day retire some of it. Those are my comments before we ask for a motion in terms of the distribution.
Motion to.
Absolutely. So, you'll make, what percentage you're going to make, Mrs. Warren? What's the motion?
Forty-five, forty.
Forty point five.
Okay, so, Ms. Warren's motion is for the city of Griffin to give an offer at 40, to leave the current distribution at 40 point, 40.5 for the city at 59 and a half percent for Spalding County. Then a second by Mr. Tinsley. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of sending out the certificate of distribution with those duration, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Anything else?
Second.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the called meeting?
Motion.
This Commissioner Murray with a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Warren. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero to close the called meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have about four minutes. Stretch your legs before the meeting begins. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, December 13th. We're open with the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Flowers, followed by the official by Commissioner Tinsley. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious Father, we're here today to ask your blessings and guidance and our performance, our duties as layman officials. Pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interest of everyone. Help us overcome our shortcomings, keep it shannoned as a team, or work for the government, the city, and its people. Pray in your name.
Thank you. First item is to approve the agenda, and we need to delete item 19 since we need an executive session after this meeting. We have a motion to approve the agenda. We get the shift of item 19. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Warren. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Moving into presentations and delegations. We'd like to recognize Randy Dewberry, Class A Water Operator in Water Distribution as November 2022's strongest link in the chain award recipient. Director of Human Resources, Ms. Stephanie Woods will address. You're welcome.
Hello. I'm going to need some help with this one. So, Randy Dewberry, if you'll come up, Brandon Lewis, and Brian Byers, and Cole Thompson, if you've made it.
He hasn't come out yet.
Hasn't made it yet? Okay. This is a really fun presentation, and I'm very honored to be a part of it because it's unusual how it happened. Brian came to my office a couple of weeks ago for an unrelated matter, and we were just talking about a lot of things, and he went on to start talking about this wonderful man, Randy Dewberry, who had worked for the city of Griffin for over 21 years. And so, in the course of speaking, he was just talking about what a great man Mr. Dewberry was, not just at work, but just in life, and how he had really been instrumental in helping Brian grow up and navigate life, the ups and downs of it. Randy had been instrumental in both Brian and Cole getting their required license for water, and they both insisted that had it not been for Randy helping him, helping them after hours, they probably would not have gotten it. And I bring Cole Thompson into it because when Brian was in my office and he kept talking about Mr. Dewberry, he kept mentioning Cole, and I said, well, can we call him on the phone? So, we called up Cole so he could join in on the conversation. It was kind of funny. As soon as Cole answered the phone, Brian said, hey dude, just so you know, Ms. Woods is on the phone before he started saying too much, which I thought was kind of funny. But he just said so many great things about Randy. I said, is it okay if I make notes and so we can nominate him for the strongest link? So, that's exactly what we did. I did the form and the paperwork to nominate him on behalf for Brian and Cole, and asked Brandon Lewis to come up because Brandon can talk a little bit more about Randy since he works in his department than I can. So, Brandon, if you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I'll say that I couldn't be more proud of Brian and Cole for, and Stephanie, of course, for guiding them through the process to recognize Randy for all that he's done. Because I found out through their nomination what Randy's done that I wasn't aware of, taking his time to mentor our younger staff and helping them achieve some rather challenging certifications. I think a C D L being one of them, namely is apparently a very hard test to pass. That speaks a lot to Randy's character. Mentioned earlier in a meeting with our staff, there's really nothing more noble that you can do than to help someone else succeed, and Randy's, you know, perfect example of what I'm talking about there. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
No, no.
Got to get it.
Okay.
Take a picture.
Yeah, can we take a picture?
Did you get it?
Hang on, y'all. One, two, three. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Dewberry, we want to congratulate and thank you. I've had many mentors in my life and mentor folks now in what we do to change the lives of the young, younger generation. It's wonderful. We're very appreciative of your service to Griffin. Thank you, sir. Thank you all for your commitment to Griffin. Moving to review financial reports for October 2022. City Manager Jessica Connor will address.
Just very briefly, as you all know, this is not going to reflect if it is any real property tax collections, so we're a little behind on those collections at this point, but that's to be expected just because of when they are due. One thing I will note is that hotel motel tax is above where we expect it to be this time of the year. We're at 40% at 33% of the year. So, that's exciting to see. Our utilities and enterprise funds are also performing right as expected, which is also good news. So, we do expect those revenue numbers to pick up with property taxes coming in, and expenses right now are a little bit under in regards to capital purchases because we've had so much trouble making those, but I'm sure that these directors will figure out where to find that equipment that they need, so I'm sure that that will get right on track in no time. That's it. Once you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you so much. This time moving to citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor puts forwards to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not informed with the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to manage domain to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for a resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side might come forward? Anybody on my left side? Is there anybody on my right side might come forward? Moving into public hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow to public comments on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinance, policy development, operational budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. Item three is to receive comments regarding the adoption of a minor amendment to the Community Work Program of the 2018 through 2038 City Breakup Comprehensive Plan. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What we have for you to see, and as you know, we apply for community development block grants annually for water sewer infrastructure projects, and we're applying for another one this upcoming year. And in order for our application to be competitive, the project specific has to be listed within the Community Work Program, which is a part of the comprehensive plan. This is a part of our current comprehensive plan. So, all that we're doing here is doing a minor amendment to just simply add this project in, so that way when we submit the grant application, we can get those points. So, if you want to have any questions, okay?
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
This is a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward to speak on this matter, ask any questions?
So all that we're doing here is doing a minor amendment to just simply add this project in. So that way, when we submit the grant application, we can get those points. So we won't have to answer any questions, okay?
Any questions from the board? Thank you. This is a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward, speak on this matter, ask any questions or make comments? Moving into the consent agenda, we have items four through eight. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? This is Murray with a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Ward. Question by Commissioner Flowers. Go ahead.
This is, does anybody have any idea of how much you clear surplus have you sold this year? Or is, can we get that information in the future? Maybe this is possible for you. Had it all in my email because I get one every time we sell something on W. But I don't know that too.
Overall, we have a motion by Commissioner Murray, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Moving into the regular agenda. Item nine is considered the minutes of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners regular meeting on November twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Murray, absent according to my information, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Four, zero, two with Commissioner Ward and Murray standing. Item ten is considered the adoption of a minor amendment to the City Community Work Program two thousand eighteen, two thousand thirty-eight City of Griffin Comprehensive Plan. This is Commissioner Murray with a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Brock. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item eleven is considered a resolution to authorize the mayor to acue the two thousand twenty-three community development block grant, CBPG, a petition for one million dollars to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, DCA to make public water and sewer infrastructure improvements in Ellis Road, Herndon Street, and North Eighteenth Street area. Ms. Ward with a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Brock. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item twelve is considered a task order from Paragon Consulting Group for a previously approved master service agreement in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars for civil engineering design and consulting services related to the show create CND landfill driveway paving improvement project. Commissioner Ward with a motion. Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item thirteen is considered first amendment to power purchase agreement for MIA Power in the city of Griffin adding exhibit B, which reflects the new pricing and reduced term. Commissioner Ward with a motion. Ms. Flowers, or Ms. Murray? Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please, by raising your hand, signal approval. Six, zero. Item fourteen, consider a master service agreement with Tetra Tech E for watershed protection plan updates and additional engineering services as required for the stormwater and watershed management departments. This is Commissioner Ward with a motion. Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item fifteen is considered a task order from Paragon Consulting Group through a previously approved master service agreement in the amount of two hundred dollars per site visit for erosion consentment inspections upon construction sites. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the task order, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item sixteen is considered joint resolution through the city of Griffin and the Spalding County Water Authority, Water Sewage Facilities Authority, agreeing to amend Article Three of the Water Sales Agreement and integrate the agreement defining the relationship between the city of Griffin and the Spalding County Water Authority for the purpose of reducing the number of required annual meetings of the governing bodies from two meetings per year to one meeting per year and providing for additional meetings for the governing bodies only as needed. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. And if we had that meeting already, Commissioner?
You did. You had it back in the summer. This would have been the second one. But we realized that staff now meets regularly enough that it's not needed for the governing bodies unless they request us to do so.
Thank you. Item seventeen is considered a claim for personal injuries alleging sustained, allegedly sustained by Rosemary, juror, honor about June thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, from a slump fall on uneven pavement at Fairmont Homes, three oh five, Quincy Avenue, Griffin, Georgia, based on any line of notice from Hart and Associates dated November ten, twenty twenty-two, directed by the city of Griffin House and Thaw. Have a motion to deny by Commissioner Murray. We have a second by Commissioner Ward to deny. All in favor of the denial, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item eighteen is considered a claim on behalf of Fernando Diante and his wife, Maria Diante, for personal injuries allegedly suffering from their vehicles involved in a May fourteen, twenty twenty-two collision with a city-owned vehicle operated by an officer of the Griffin Police Department. Any line of notice dated November ten, twenty twenty-two from Morgan &amp; Morgan for the people. With pleasure, Ward. Mr. Murray, a motion to deny. Second by Commissioner Brock to deny. All in favor of the denial, please raise your hand. Six, zero. And item nineteen, we move from the agenda, so moving into city managers' report.
I just first wanted to put on the record how thankful and happy and proud I was Saturday night to be downtown. The parade was awesome. I don't know that I have remembered a parade like that here since I was a child. And even then, I really remember being in the back of this oil and gas truck on one of the flits. What a flit was. But I just thought it was really, really fun. From what I can tell from the friends and the people that were surrounding me, everything went off without a hitch. I know that is a huge thanks to our fire department and our police department and our economic development department. And Danielle Hancock, who continues to work with economic development for the rest of this year to try and help them with their events, even though she's been taking the qualifications. A huge thank you to the county for working with us as well. And there's John Jay Smith and Heather Robinson. Had a lot of fun with the elves that were set up at Hill and Solomon. It was just really a very special, magical night downtown. And my kids on Sunday morning wanted to know, could we have another one the next night? And I think Danielle would have been very upset. And I said, yes. So it just, it really was, was a great night for, to be downtown Griffin. So I just wanted to thank everybody publicly for that and the businesses that participated as well. It was just really, really, really fun. To answer your question, Commissioner Flowers, we have received ninety-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars to date. Last year, we had a lot of catching up to do. So we were at a hundred and eighty-one thousand last year. So we're not as much, but definitely back to where surplus sales should be at this point. And then also just wanted to remind you, you should have some invitations in your folders for some of the department's Christmas parties. Some of them are very small and just go to lunch throughout the day. But some of them do have their bigger Christmas parties. We want to make sure you know that you're welcome to attend those. And that is it for me. Thank you for what you've done this year, for getting us through SDS. And I know that we've made a very significant offer for loss that I think should be well received. And hopefully we can get that signed and out the door in very, very near future. So thank you.
Mr. Allen.
Just very briefly, on a personal note, I think most of y'all know I had the privilege of spending most of the last two weeks in various hospitals. But through the miracle of modern medicine, I think I'm glad to be here tonight. But I wanted to thank those of you who contacted me with well wishes and prayers and whatnot and that you know the room is about imminent departure. Look forward to working with you all going into the new year.
And we're glad you're healthy and back tonight. So that's awesome.
No surprise to see, Jerry.
Mr. Brock.
Well, I guess we got another team here as a drill. My time will be up at the end of next year. Hope I'm still around through Drew. But I want to just say thank you. The city of Griffin's doing good. We're doing more than we've ever done. And with actually less number of people. The attitude that I see from all the employees at the time are doing very well. I know Jessica probably getting some complaints after watching a while from some of us sitting here or some of y'all in the audience. But overall, Jessica, thank you for what you're doing. And you raising new youngers to be good, good. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, folks.
Thank you. Commissioner Murray.
Just to reiterate, downtown, the Christmas parade, I've heard and seen nothing on social media, but just praise. And just, I think that Griffin has never looked better. It's driving, it's beautiful, and it's because of the hard work of everyone. And I just wanted to let you know that. Congratulations, Mr. Randy Dewberry, for going above and beyond. Wish you well during this holiday season and keep motivating those younger employees and being a mentor to them. I appreciate you for doing that. And I've enjoyed working with you through the years, and you look good. So I appreciate everything that you did. And Ward, thank you. Merry Christmas. Been a great year.
Commissioner Flowers.
It is a day of repetitive comments. Because essentially, I just wanted to say what they said. But I want to make sure that I acknowledge the team that goes beyond the administrative aspect of it. I, I think it's pretty unanimous that our community is the inviting, thriving place that we want it to be. And that's certainly, we make the decisions, but we do not do the work up here. And so if we can't possibly be successful, we all have people showing up and getting pants dirty and getting into it. And so as we go into this holiday season, I'm very, very grateful and appreciative for our employees that made the city run. You know, we, we get to make some decisions, but I don't think a lot of us couldn't do half of the jobs that we have in the city just from a technical expertise or know-how. And so I, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge the backbone of the city. And that's the people who come to work every day and get it done. So I appreciate it.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
There too.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Commissioner Tinsley.
Randy, congratulations on your award. It's great that you offered a mentorship to our younger employees. I was at the parade this past weekend. It was tremendous. I mean, you got people five and six deep watching this thing. It was, I almost had chills up your spine. It was really exciting to see that many people present, all the floats. I think we had a hundred, hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty units. It was, it was tremendous. I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Drew. Glad to have you back. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. See you all next year.
So just to wrap it up, just want to thank our staff. You all are amazing. I was talking to Ms. O'Connor earlier today about the initiative that you take and how you keep working so hard to, to overcome the challenges that we face every day. And we just appreciate each of you. And to Ms. O'Connor, Mr. Allen, thank you for your leadership and your support and always working to make us look good. This is my nineteenth year on the elected official. And people don't get it, but this team up here is family. And I spend, I feel like I spend more time with y'all in conversation and meetings than I do with anybody else in this community. And I cherish each of your friendships and respect you for the differences that we may have, but also appreciate always being there and look forward to another great year. So on behalf of the Griffin City Commission, we would wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hope that we'll have even greater news for next year. God bless each of you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Commissioner Murray, second. By Commissioner Flowers, all in favor, please click.